Good evening and welcome to the 4:00 PM City Council meeting on Tuesday, uh, Tuesday, October 15th, 2024. The Walnut Creek City Council encourages a respectful dialogue that supports freedom of speech and values of diversity of opinion. The council staff and the members of the public are expected to be civil and courteous, and refrain from questioning the character or motives of others participating in the meeting. The city requests that the speakers not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the council meeting. If you don't know what that means, please refer to the end of the agenda to review options for participating in the meeting, and we are about to begin. So will everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Francois.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Wilk.
Here.
Mayor Protem Darling.
Here.
Mayor Haas.
I am here as well. Under California law, public comments at special meetings are limited to the subjects on the agenda only. Therefore, public comments will be received during the City Council consideration of the item. And to kick off the consideration is Arts and Rec Director Kevin Safin.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, for the record, Kevin Safin, Director of Arts and Recreation. I will do my best to move relatively quickly through this presentation so you can have time to deliberate, and then you have other business to attend to. But if I talk too fast, I know you'll tell me to slow down.
Always.
Always, it's balance. So I'm here with members of our design team, Jocelyn Lawrence Barish from Nolan Tam, Gina Chavez from RRM Design Group, and then we have staff as well to supplement my answers in case I don't get it right. Uh, I'm going to give you some numbers to start. Fifty, fifty years plus is how long our community center and pool have been open. Fifteen plus, which is how long some of us have been working on replacing the pool and community center. Five, which is how long we've been working on the Your Parks, Your Future project, and then two, when Measure O was passed. And so all those years have combined to get us to where we are today, which is in front of you for a consideration of the design development presentation package for a new community center and pool at Heather Farm Park. So why are we here? Staff and the design team will present to you the design development presentation package. We're looking to get your direction. On a few areas related to the projects, we can move forward to the next phase, which is construction documentation phase, which is the exciting part for architects. We don't see them for a while, they come back and ready to bid it up. So what we're going to focus on today are four things. The project site plan, the landscaping plan and the planting palette, the recreational pool place structure, and then the exterior building materials palette. That said, we're not limited to those topics. If you want to talk about other things that you see in front of you, we're happy to engage in that discussion. So I will provide a background on the project. The design team will walk through the items that I just discussed with you. I'll come back and talk about, talk about next steps. And then through it all, we'll pause after each section to take questions from you. We'll take public comment at the end of the staff presentation, and then we'll seek your direction at the end. So that's what we're doing today. So with that, I will start with the purpose for this project that was approved by council at various meetings over the past several years. One is to replace the 50-year-old-plus aging community center and pool with a combined council policy decision, combined facility at Heather Farm. That's one. Two, replace the existing three pools, Clark Pool, with a new 50-meter pool and a family recreational pool. And then to locate the exist, the new facility at the existing community center site, which as you'll hear tonight is a constrained site. There's streets on, there's a street on one side, there's a pond on the other, there's a playground on one, and there's a lake on the other. And so you'll see that the architectural team, design team, has done a lot to fit a lot into a relatively small location. So more direction from council policy-wise about principles. I won't read all this, but this new facility should be a visual asset. This is related to the building. It should prioritize support of our existing programs and provide the possibility for future programming, provide more space that's flexible, and then enhance views from the facility out into the park, and then into the facility from the park. And then related to aquatics, the guiding principles were a balance. We use that word a lot, balance of programming. We have a lot of competitive use, but we also have more recreational use, lessons in public. This should support, like the building, the existing programs and provide for the possibility of future program expansion. We want to maximize the pool deck, support the existing events that take place at the pool, and then appropriately support the support spaces such as the changing rooms and the deck. So those are the principles that we use to inform us as we move forward in the project. I mentioned Your Parks, Your Future, that began in 2018. We went through a lot of planning. We looked at three different parks that we could be doing projects, Heather Farm, Civic Park, and Shadlands. We settled in Heather Farm. We'd be on the conceptual work around Heather Farm back in 2021, worked that all the way through January 2023, when we started really engaging the community in the schematic design phase. And then for the community, or the combined project from September really through April of this year, we had a lot of community engagement, getting to public meetings, and to this last, hopefully, last public meeting before we start the construction process, which will begin tomorrow, all right? The construction documentation phase tomorrow, up through 2025, when we'll bid out the project, come back to you again to award the contract by the end of next year. Then construction would start, and then we'd be open in 2027. So that's from 2018 through '27, a lot has happened. So in terms of public outreach during the schematic design phase, we had open houses, we had pop-up events, we had surveys, we had stakeholder meetings, we had public meetings with DRC in January, we had public meetings with PROS in January and February, then meetings with you in February, March, and April. That concluded the process that it took us to get from concept to schematic, which is actually putting pen to paper to see what generally the facilities and the park site would look like. So you last saw us in April of '24. This is the first time you've seen this officially, and we've done a lot of work between April and now, so I want to give you a bit of what we've done since then. April is when we started the design development phase, which is the phase that we're in right now. So the architectural and design team did a lot of detailed design work. We had stakeholder meetings, and we had more public meetings. And so the headline here is that there's been a lot of public input throughout this process, not just a public meetings like this, but formal and informal meetings with the community. So stakeholder meetings. We did those back in the summer in July, two separate meetings, one of the environmental groups and one of the aquatic groups. The environmental groups were the Gardens, the Audubon Society, now called the Mount Apple Bird Alliance, and then the Open Space Foundation and the Friends of the Creek. And then the aquatics groups, which are the Aquatic Foundation, and then the swim teams, the Aquanuts, the Masters, the Aqua Bears, and the Walnut Creek Swim Club. So what did we hear from them? This is a summary. This is in your staff report as well in more detail. One of the, the areas of feedback we got was to reconsider the trees that are part of the proposed planting palette that we were considering back in the summer, to do things around protecting the birds through glass that was bird-safe, mitigating potential noise from the pool deck. This was mostly the gardens who had that, that concern, making sure there's enough power, Wi-Fi, and good solutions to accommodate our existing large events that happen at the pool. And overall, the stakeholder groups were satisfied with the design and the materials. And so a lot has happened to get to that point, because as you recall, there was some concern and questions and contention about the design about six to nine months ago. So we're in a much better place, and so we're very pleased with the partnership we have with the community and those stakeholder groups. And then we met with the Design Review Commission. I won't read all this, this is in your report as well. We met with them in September. They are, and you'll see the different design palettes for the exterior. They liked what the staff was recommending, the design team was recommending, which is Palette A, and you'll see what that looks like in a bit here. They liked the improvements that are made to the pool area. They liked the opportunity to walk around the entire pond without having to go around the building. They supported the commitment to lead equivalency, and they liked that there was a balance of the, what they called distinctive and expressive materials, but also recognizing there's a need to save money. So that was DRC. PROS, we met with them September 9th. They had a different topic or different areas of emphasis than DRC did. They supported, and you'll see this in a little bit, the place structure that you have in your packets. There were a couple of options they were given. One was a farm theme, one was aquatic life theme. It was universal. The farm theme was not supported. They didn't like the idea of cows and horses up above the pool doing their thing. They thought it was a little more natural to have aquatic life. So, uh, and I will talk what we did with this feedback in a minute. They encouraged design teams to look more at the native plants and trees, and justify when we're not using natives, why we're not, why we're using non-natives. They supported the, like DRC, the equivalency for lead, and the same palette for exterior materials they supported, similar to DRC. So my last slide summarized the consolidated feedback that we got from stakeholders, from DRC and PROS, which is overall significant and strong support for the design and the site plan, especially from the aquatics groups. They liked that the concepts meet the community needs, and the commissioners had interests that were expressed back in January, in February, and March. They liked that we've done some changes to address that. There are still some questions about the natives there, and you'll hear about that tonight. Again, the preference for this exterior palette A, and what we've done with that feedback that we received from the community, stakeholders, as well as DRC and PROS, is we've incorporated that into the design that you have in front of you today. So it's been a good listening process for all of us as we continue to refine and improve that. And so overall, there is significant enthusiasm for the project to move forward to you and then to the construction documentation phase. And so with that, I will pause and see if you have any questions for me about background. And if not, I will move on to our design team.
Looking around, is there, are there any questions? Oh, clarify away.
As you move through the, there were some comments that the stakeholders and the two commissions had. Are you going to cover how you've addressed them? Thank you.
Yes, the answer is yes. Okay. With that, I'll turn it over to Jocelyn Lawrence Barish from Nolan Tam.
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, council members. The design portion of this presentation is going to cover the general plan of the project within the park, the building plan itself, the, how the circulation and drop-off works in relationship to that building plan, and how the pool deck specifically works in relationship to that, and then back out to the larger issues to do with the site, the planting plan, the palette for the plants, et cetera. And we'll, we'll, we'll be looking at several different ways to, to consider the site within the building itself. So the park is our constraint. This is an existing park, very well-loved, lots of amenities, we want to be able to respect and enhance as we put a new facility within it. So as, as Kevin mentioned, we've got that existing all abilities playground to the south, we've got the pond off to the west, and North San Carlos Drive to the east, and a creek corridor and a natural lake to the north. And so the project site itself is fairly constrained. It does mean that we have had to prioritize various different parts of the program, some, you know, some of the things that we would have liked to maybe have done on this site had to get constrained, made smaller than perhaps they might have been otherwise. But we have been able to incorporate all of the important features that we need within the function of this facility. It's a 5.1 acre site of project area, and that's slightly smaller than if you take the exact size of the existing community center and Clark and combine them, mostly to do with how the existing community center wasn't really constrained in, in how it was sitting on the site, the building itself and the program was smaller within that site. And fitting a new set of pools and fitting all of that pool deck into this area that used to host just a single building has made it so that this area will have more hardscape than it currently does at the moment. However, it will be hardscape that is treated with, you know, bioretention ponds, the water will be held and treated. And so even though there is an increase in hardscape in this area, the water quality runoff from this area will be better than what it currently discharges. Similarly, there will be overall less green space in this particular pocket. However, the plantings themselves will be more considered. The current planting palette in that area does not contain natives except for perhaps those that are unintentional, and instead, instead, there will be quite a few purposely intentional native species, as my colleague from RRM will explain in a moment. And most importantly, we've really tried to link up the circulation from these various amenities that we're bounded by so that they naturally allow you to go from one experience to the park to the other. So that, as Kevin mentioned, the path around the pond is a complete circuit for people to walk around instead of one that has to weave in and out of buildings and other amenities. So the building itself has these three major program areas connected by some circulation. There's a separate entry to the building volumes that are to the north, which hosts the community center functions, and there's an additional entry to the south. They're right next to each other. So here's the community center entry, and here's the aquatic center entry. So community center functions in red, orange, and brown, and aquatic center functions in, in blue. And/or, blue also means restroom, apologies for the confusion in color. And there is this central hinging lobby that acts as a community living room. It's an interior space that people who are not attending programs can take advantage of and be able to relax in a conditioned environment, should that be what they need, or wait for people who are engaged in programs in a comfortable space. The lakeside room that this facility will host is very similar in size to the one currently housed in the community center. There is an expandable end portion to it that gives you a flexible, separate, multipurpose room, one additional multipurpose room. So here's the expandable area, one additional multipurpose room. And all of the current recreation and aquatics programs that are offered can be fit within this space with some room for future flexibility. These are much more flexible spaces than what are currently on the site. They have much more ample storage, and the finishes and the configurations of the room allow for multiple different kinds of programs to be held at different times, with an emphasis on facility rental and enjoying the views of the pond. This one, there we go. How do I hit escape? I think having right-clicked, yeah, prevents it from forwarding. Thank you. There we go. Appreciate it. Okay, so the site plan itself hosts quite a lot of program, not just within the building itself, but also within the site that surrounds the building. So there are a lot of fenced event courtyards adjacent to those multipurpose rooms that I described to allow for expandable spaces, spillover spaces, indoor/outdoor kinds of programming. And there is an entry drop-off sequence, I'll explain in more detail. And there's obviously the pools and their decks, which we will also cover specifically in other slides. And let's look at that circulation a little bit more closely. So we worked pretty closely with City of Walnut Creek's Traffic Engineering Department and as well as with independent traffic consultants to come up with the safest, most pedestrian-friendly way to allow cars to interact with these drop-off zones that we've created by having the two entries right near each other. And the way that it was determined to do that was to add one new entry dedicated to the public slightly north of where the current entry to the community center facility is, and have a one-way drop-off sequence that allows you to then have this existing interface with North San Carlos Drive turned into a one-way exit only from that sequence. So the idea would be that folks that are coming to the new facility come in this way, can choose to either go park or choose to come along this, this area. Right here is the drop-off area where people could just stop, let people off, interact with these areas for wheelchairs to be able to get into the entry plaza, and then continue on out, and then decide to go across the street to park, or leave the park itself, or go back and find further parking if that's what they need. But the idea is that the existing bike path ends up helping double-tune and pick up and then shoot pedestrians across that slower traffic area so that pedestrians have a safe place to interface with that traffic, so that everything is slow enough, they can get over into the entry area and take advantage of all the various waiting and seating areas that there are for them to interface with in the front of the building. It's a little bit of a larger look at how that also crosses an emergency vehicle access lane, which we're currently in the, in the process of partnering with the Contra Costa County Fire Department on finalizing how exactly that behaves to make sure that they are in favor of that design as well. I'm going to pass things over to my colleague at RRM to talk about the landscape design.
Good afternoon. My name's Gina Chavez. I'm from RRM Design Group, Landscape Architects on the project. So the plants for this project have been selected based on a few different elements. One, they have to be super low-maintenance, hardy. We worked with the Public Works Department to select these plants. And also, we chose a number of native species, which we have continued to refine with some of the stakeholders. So we're continuing to work on that, and I'll show you in a couple of slides how we're doing that. But then the plant palette is also broken up into these different areas according to their use. So the plants in the pool area will be very different from the plants in the event garden, so we have to look at those specifics. So starting with the tree plan, so we have chosen these trees based on their adaptability to urban conditions. We have two native species and three non-native species. The non-native species were selected based on their resistance to disease and pests, and their ability to adapt in constrained environments. So they don't have lots of open landscape to spread out into, they have these constrained environments by the concrete and by the uses around them. The native plants that we have chosen are the coast live oak, and then based on the feedback that we heard from the stakeholders, we also added the western red bud tree. Another reason we selected this tree palette is because, because of its year-round interest. So these trees look good all year long, and they're very tidy, so easy to keep up, very low maintenance. That is a very important issue, especially around the pool area. Today, the redwood needles get into the pool system and cause lots of problems for the maintenance department. So the tree around the pool is the Brisbane box. It has large leaves, it's evergreen, so they don't fall in large volumes, and they're easy to clean up. They also have minimal flowers and seedlings that they drop. So that was the reason that we chose that tree. We also worked with the stakeholders to add some native plants, which I'll show you on the next palettes. Oh, sorry, one more point I wanted to make here. So the area in front of the community center where the redwood grove is, that will be replaced with the coast live oak, and there are a few different reasons for this. So the redwood trees today are in very poor health, they are not tolerating the drought that we have in this area, they're more suited to the coast, they're coast redwoods. So we are putting in the live oak here. Another thing that this helps with in addition to the maintenance concerns is that it creates a safer bioretention basin. So if we had the redwood trees, we would have to have a smaller bioretention basin, and it would have to be deeper. So now that we have more space, we can spread it out and make it a shallower basin. Oops, sorry, wrong way. I think I have this thing upside down. All right. So because we are creating such expansive new facility, we are losing a number of trees. So we are losing 120 trees, but we are replacing those with 60 trees on our site and an additional 140 trees throughout the park. 90 of those trees have already been installed as part of a community service day, and those included the California buckeye trees and a number of oak trees, for a total net increase of 80 trees. We're also looking at more places within our project site to add trees. So it will be upwards of the 80 net increase. So looking at the plant palettes per the different use areas, Leslie Hunt was very gracious to give us a tour of the Native Plant Society garden to show us the plants that are really local to the Diablo region. So that was really helpful because we had a number of natives in our palette, but they were cultivars which weren't necessarily local to the Diablo area. So we worked with her to specifically choose natives that are local to the Diablo area. So we have added a number of those plants to these images as well as our overall plant palette, so that our native plants are upwards of 60% of our palette. So here, this is showing the front area where we have the, the red bud tree and the ginkgos, and then some natives and grasses, as well as some ornamental plants. And then the, the event garden in the back has a little bit more of a green field, lush with the crepe myrtles, some of the California iris, and a number of other native plants as well. This is the back area of the, well, it's not really the back, there is no back to this project, but this is the pond edge of the community center and aquatic area. And this is really to reflect the riparian character of the site, of the pond and the pools. So we have a number of natives and grasses, and we have the ginkgo tree here, which emulates the native poplar tree, which really isn't actually possible to have on the site due to its invasive root structure. And then at the pool area, this is where we need to have our functional plants, the bulletproof plants that can take the beating of the, all of the uses that are going to happen at this pool. But we, we were able to weave in some native grasses, ground covers, and a vine as well. I'm going to stop there for questions.
I'm not very agrarian, so I'm going to trust somebody else for the question.
And this would be based on your part, too, right? So these questions would cover the, the slides that Jocelyn presented as well.
Cindy Silva first, and then Matt, and then Cindy Darling.
Thank you. Could you go back to the slides that are the ingress and egress, the circulation plan?
Sure.
So there were two places that I actually have a question about. I think it's really smart to have a new entry that slows traffic down. It is very confusing out there now, where you can go in two directions, which means you can actually go in five. Emergency vehicle access, how do we, I understand the concept and what it's intended to do, but how do we keep the regular visitor from not taking a shortcut?
That's actually at the heart of the discussion we're having with Contra Costa County Fire Department. We had originally shown what are called knockdown bollards, and they're the kind that are sort of plastic, and it was a large truck.
That's what it looked like on one of the drawings.
Yeah, with, that's not their, their favorite, apparently. So we're, we're having a meeting with them, I think, two weeks from now, to discuss what all of the other possible solutions are. There's having a, a gate arm that they have the code for, and the public does not. There is some difficulty with that and how far it has to be placed back from the road. Another possibility is having a mountable curb. So it looks like a curb to anyone with a normal car, but to someone with a heavy truck, it looks like something you can drive right over. Probably that last one is the one we're gunning for the most. It's the one that allows that to still act as a pedestrian plaza without having a lot of other obstructions in it, because that is how it will be used on a day-to-day basis when there are no emergencies.
And you have to accommodate both the longer fire trucks as well as the EMS vehicles.
Absolutely.
My second question is at the one-way exit. Right now, you can park at the parking lot at Ball Field One, I spent a lot of time there on Saturday during Community Service Day. And you walk across the street, and there's a sidewalk that runs all the way along that would, looks like the southern edge of the driveway. It doesn't look like, it looks like the sidewalk will be there, but then is disappearing a little bit.
You're talking about right here?
No, actually, if I park in, across the street, and I walk to the community center or the aquatics facility, it looks like the sidewalk stops. I want a cursor.
Yeah. Do you?
I think it may be more visible on the next slide.
Yeah. There we go. There we go.
So it looks like the new sidewalk dumps into the, oh, no, it's dumping onto sidewalk. Okay.
Yes, it does not disappear.
It's a plaza, not a, not sidewalk, not a pedestrian path.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. Matt?
Thank you. Let's see, I think it was a, I thought it was slide 21, is that where you're on right now? Maybe it was slide 20. Nope. The drop-off plan.
Okay. This are the one, one forward.
Yeah. So I, I, in concept, I really like what you've done here with the new entry and the drop-off area, which we really don't have now with the current pool, and I see that as a real benefit. Do you have a estimate for how many cars would be able to drop off in the drop-off lane?
Yeah. Oops. Yes, I believe it was nine. And I think currently there are seven spots at Clark, but we have to still work out --
But we have to still work out the exact details as we get into construction documentation. But we're somewhere between seven and nine.
And those spaces, we're thinking, would most highly be used for events at the community center or for large swim meets?
Are you talking about for drop-off or parking?
For drop-off.
Yes, but really for also everyday use, like you could drop your kid off at swim practice and keep going.
Was any consideration given to adding additional spaces to the drop-off lane? Or what would the trade-offs be for doing that?
Yes, it's just due to the constraints of the site itself. We fit in as many as we could.
There's also the problem, if you add, like, for instance, another lane, and you had three lanes here, the problem is it starts to have the effect like you have at the airport, where you no longer have clarity about who's allowed to stand still and who's supposed to keep going. With just two lanes, it's very clear that the ones that are parked up along the curb are the ones that are allowed to stand still. And if you're in the other lane, you have to keep going. There will be signage, but mostly, it's to do with having two lanes is far more clear than more.
And safer. And safer. Yeah, because if you have people getting out in the lane that's further away from the drop-off, then they have to cross the cars that are close to the curb.
Okay. That makes sense. I was, I can attest to that. I was at the Oakland Airport on Sunday night. There was a lot of confusion.
Yeah.
And we're talking children.
Yes. In, in these green spaces that we see here, or on some of the other slides, maybe it's a kind of a question for Kevin or staff, but is there, is there an idea or a concept of how these could be programmed for some sort of public use, more than just a passive landscaping feature?
So, are you talking, Kencilla, about this area here, which is, which is programmed to be our event garden? Or more of these areas here?
More that, and then where the Coast Live Oaks are going in that kind of island area.
So, where the Coast Live Oaks are going, that's right now, that's kind of an elevated area that's not accessible to the public. We are considering potentially public art as one of the options there. Sorry, I'll show you. Up here, we're, we're placing the redwoods and putting in the live oaks, even though it's a bioretention area. So, it may not be as accessible as, as one may want, but it could be visually accessible for public art. Otherwise, and I think we'll talk about this a little bit, this event garden would certainly be programmed, the areas around the exterior here, near the pond from a viewing point. And then, inside the pool area where there's green would be, just like we have today, lawn that could be used by people who are swimming, or if there's a swim meet. So, yes, and we don't want to overprogram the, the turf area, because then my friends in Public Works say, hey, you're beating the heck out of this, and we have to maintain it. So, it's a balance.
So, mostly, is it fair to say on the pond edge, then, with benches and the, and the community garden?
Right, and a little bit area outside some of the classrooms, where we'd have a little bit of an exterior space to do some programming. But for the most part, the programmable space outside is that event garden at the, at the top there.
Event garden. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, and this is wonderful to look at. So, my questions really are how we are going to help people understand this. Right now, the drop-off area where you go back out is a two-way, and this is going to turn into one-way with people leaving. Are we going to narrow that, or put skull and crossbones?
Only at Halloween. No, it necks down, so that it's far, far skinnier. It's really only one lane as you, as you get to exit onto San Carlos Drive.
So, it'll be visually obvious.
There will also be signage, so that if you're a car approaching, it will tell you that you should not be entering.
Okay. And then, the entry that's further up, the new entry, from that, you can go into that parking lot or turn into the drop-off area?
That's right. So, you can see, there's actually a, a little bit of a, there's a two-headed arrow. It's a light that you can see right inside that entry. Exactly.
And so, they can, they can either turn into that aisle or go past the shades, the solar panels and go in that way? Okay. And then, when, so you've got the emergency vehicle access going across, and then you've got the crosswalk further. Is the intent to get pedestrians to use the crosswalk?
Absolutely. So, I mean, the luckiest pedestrians would be the ones that come down from the parking lot and cross over that lovely creek bridge. However, if, if you wanted to use one of those ADA spots, or you were coming from across the street, then you would collect into that pedestrian path that's shared with the bike path, and there would be a clearly delineated pedestrian crossing.
Okay. And so, whatever you come up with with Confire will have some delineation, like, don't walk here, just keep going.
Right.
Okay.
There'll probably, there may be even those mountable curbs, like we discussed at the entry to the emergency access. Those may occur here and here as well, just to really have regular cars not view that as a place that cars go.
Okay, because we would hate that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. One other question. Currently, when you exit the area in front of the community center, when you come to the corner at San Carlos Drive, you can turn left, or you can turn right, or you can go straight across. All good options, particularly if you've dropped someone off and now you have to go park. Is that still going to be feasible from there?
Yes, but even though we've necked it down as, as far as we can, it's, and it's considered one lane. It's a generous lane. It has to stay at least 20 feet wide in order to conform to fire apparatus, road access.
Thank you.
Code requirements. Yeah.
I see no further questions, so moving on.
Thank you. Okay, so now the fun part. We're passing these down. All right, so, the physical samples are there for you to look at, at your leisure. However, we're going to turn our attention mostly to the pool deck at the moment. That, that, if, if that box takes a long time to look at, you're welcome to pour over it. Or you can just pass it along and ignore it for later. All right, so, the pools themselves have two separate functions, and they're divided by a grade change to help keep the pools slightly safer. Two pools with two different, significantly different depths like this are, would already have been required by code to have a fence separating them, so that young children who are playing in the recreation pool aren't able to immediately then go jump into a deeper pool. And so, when we learned that, and we also considered the site itself, where the area that the deeper 50-meter pool sits on is currently where there is a slight hill. It would be more expensive to completely excavate that area all the way down to be at the same grade as the recreational pool. It made quite a lot of sense to use a grade change to separate the two pools from each other a little further than even a fence would. So, there's currently a wall right here. It's got stairs at each end, as well as a ramp, and about four feet in difference between the pool deck on either side. So, then there's the 50-meter pool, slightly elevated, and the recreational pool, featuring a recreational play area, a current channel, and a lap pool on a slightly lower level adjacent to the main aquatic building. Now, the main aquatic building has an aquatic classroom, some offices, some storage, and it has a separate changing room that features, you, you'll enter into a vestibule that's got a trough sink. Can be a little hard to read and plan, but there are about seven sinks for each gender, and some mirrors, and then entering into a space that will look a little bit different than the kind of changing rooms that you see at Clark today, because modern proclivities for changing and showering, there's a preference for privacy over communal bathing situations. So, this changing room will feature showers with individual stalls that have an attached changing space with them, and then benches along the middle of each space, and water closets and urinals along the opposite wall. So, water closets and urinals along this area, and then shower stalls on either side, including some ADA spots. There's also some family restroom changing spots, including one that actually has an adult changing table, which is an amenity folks down at the playground, apparently, will, will like to avail themselves of. There are additional buildings off the pool deck. There are some additional restrooms down on this area for each gender. One, one each, approachable by each deck grade. So, one, one that empties out onto this level, one that empties out onto this level. There are some exterior showers, so showers on the pool deck themselves for folks who need a, who prefer a quick rinse-off rather than having a full changing experience. And we are fully code compliant, so there are actually quite a lot of plumbing fixtures all over this, this pool deck. There's also a pool mechanical building down here housing equipment. The pools themselves are heated with gas, while the building is heated with only electric power. And this is to do with a study we did early on that determined it's neither energy nor cost efficient at the current state of affairs to heat the pools with electricity. The overall deck space, comparing that to what's currently at Clark, is larger by just about 8,000 square feet. Some of this is to do with how this is sighted differently, where it is relative to the building and the fact that we've, we've got quite a lot of shade at this pool deck. It was a, something we preference. So, you can see in light gray all of the shaded areas. There's building overhang that provides shade. There's a shade structure at that grade change that we talked about. And there are a lot of both rentable and other, otherwise usable shade structures, cabanas of various sizes and function, so that there's quite a lot of shade on the pool deck itself. And then, associated landscape areas also slightly larger than what could be found at Clark with lots of shade trees that have these trees with hopefully very large leaves that don't like to drop very often. The pools go from three and a half feet at the 50-meter shallow end to 12 to 13 feet, depending on how you're counting it, at the deep end. There's zero depth entry here at the recreation pool that gets up to about three feet and continues then into this lap pool that starts at three and a half feet and goes to eight feet. So, quite a lot of variety of depths. The pool deck itself also has the ability to open out onto the adjacent park area, so that when there are large events being held, there is spillover space, so that there is plentiful room for people who are erecting individual tents to await events and to have other kinds of amenities off-deck, while still being able to accommodate the basic functions that need to occur, for instance, during a meet on the deck itself. The recreational play pool structure, as Kevin mentioned, there was a couple of different competing themes that the community identified as, as favorites, but we've definitely gone with the pond life kind of aquatic theme. The actual play structure that's featured in that shallower area has two different slides, interactive spray and bubble features, some of which will be on this structure itself, and some that are sprinkled actually throughout that pool. Bubblers and things for smaller kids. There's a dump bucket, which is apparently really popular and gets a big line. Kids can't wait to have water dumped on them. Non-enclosed slides that make them a little less dangerous, a little less steep than the ones that require enclosure. So, it's a, it's a larger in size, and it's got a broader age range that it can address compared to the structure that you'll have seen at Larky, which is geared towards slightly younger children. It could look something like this. The pool on the left is a built example, and that enclosed pool is not the version we would have, but it could look very similar to that. The one on the right is, is the schematic we're currently working with to incorporate frogs and lily pads and cat tails to, to have fun with how the, the various guardrails and bubblers and dump buckets work. Questions on the pool deck area?
Matt? No? Cindy Darling, please.
So, on the picture of the area, as far as lifeguard visibility with the structure, how does that end up working? Do you, can one lifeguard, or do you need multiple lifeguards around the structure?
Regardless of whether there was a shade structure, there have to be lifeguards placed at various places around both pools.
So, it's the same number of lifeguards regardless of what's out there in the middle of it?
Exactly. In fact, the, the shade, the shaded grade area actually has a lifeguard director stationed parked underneath it. So, there's sort of like a central command post there, deep within the pool deck, acting as a liaison to the various lifeguards who are stationed around the perimeters of the pool.
Okay, thank you. Glad we went back to this slide. Thank you for the presentation. We have been receiving some comments regarding the changing rooms, the bathrooms. What is the code requirement, and has it changed over? And so, can you explain what we currently have at Clark versus what this has? And have the aquatics experts been part of this process?
Absolutely. So, the code has changed quite significantly since the Clark Center was constructed. Right now, the way that you determine the amount of plumbing fixtures that are required are taking the square footage area of water, so within each pool.
Square footage of the flat water?
Of, of any water, flat or, or undergoing a current to riffle it. Yes, either way. You take the surface area of the water, and you assume that there will be an occupant load factor of 50, meaning for every 10 square feet? It's really dense. It's actually like way more people in a pool than you would ever want, ever. And part of the reason they ask you to assume an occupancy that's so high is they're sort of giving themselves a, a safety factor for how many people will actually be on the deck at any given time. The, the buildings all have a separate occupancy calculation, but the pools try to accommodate however many occupants may be on the deck as well. So, they, and they really give themselves quite a bit of, of safety margin. There are some places around the state that sometimes allow variances to how many plumbing fixtures are required, because there, there are a lot. Contra Costa County tends to prefer having all of the code-acquired fixtures, which we have within this project. And that governs how many showers, how many urinals, how many water closets, how many lavatories, how many water fountains. We are fully code compliant with that count. And our pool designers are the ones who perform that calculation for us. So, it's within consistent, it's consistent with pool designs all across the state.
And how many restroom facilities are included in that count? Because I counted at least three locations where there are bathhouse facilities.
That's right. So, there is this changing facility, which is probably the main place most folks will go to take a shower and use the restroom and wash their hands. There are also these family restrooms that are located here. They're single occupancy. So, that's just a single toilet, single shower, single lavatory for washing hands. But that allows, you know, children who might have eaten something and need to get washed off before they get in the pool, have a little bit of extra elbow room in order to take care of things like that. And then, there are restrooms down here that have just water closets and lavatories. And then, lastly, actually, so technically four, exterior showers, here, here, and there are even some freestanding up here for the, those who like the briefest shower experience.
So, did I hear you correctly that the code requires you to calculate, use this flat water measure to calculate the number of toilets, the showers separately, the sinks separately? So, the outdoor showers are counting toward the shower total?
That's right.
But they don't count, obviously, toward toilet?
No.
Because they're not toilets?
Each, each different plumbing fixture type is regulated with a target based on that occupant load factor.
And this code is Contra Costa County or the state?
That's California Building Code.
California.
Mm-hmm.
And so, Dennis has looked at this?
Yes.
A lot.
He gave us the table to set how many fixtures we had to have.
And he's checked it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm seeing no more questions, so do we have any move-on to move to?
Yes, we do. We have the exterior building palette, which you have a physical version of. This is the digital version for everyone watching. So, we have two very similar, but slightly different exterior building materials palettes that we developed. And we developed these palettes based on community feedback that we received roughly a year ago, where we showed quite a lot of different kinds of buildings to the public and asked a lot of questions about what their preferences were. And we saw a lot of preference for natural materials, like wood and metal and stone, as well as designs that tended to walk a line between contemporary, modern, and traditional. So, not super-traditional buildings, nor super-contemporary and modern, but something that had a nice blend of both. So, these, these building materials will be able to do that. They're also a combination of some more expensive materials and some, some that are more budget-conscious as we, as we make sure that we're balancing, balancing the budget to move forward. So, Building Material Palette A features a lot of wood, particularly a lot of exposed wood structure. It's a nice two for, wood is a great structural material. There are also a lot of wood shading systems, both trellises, but also vertical sunshades. There are most likely just metal at the roof, and also a lot of metal structure when required in order to deal with the wetter aquatic environments, both at the pond face and at the pool deck. We're using not natural stone, which is very expensive, but a large-format porcelain tile that has a, a stone feel to it. It's got a texture to the face that will read very much like stone in the areas where we need protection from wet elements. There are some, some groundface masonry units that also can feel fairly stone-like, because the, the sizes of the stone in the concrete are larger and feel a little bit more like a sandstone in some of the outbuildings. And there's some accent tiles thrown in there. And then, when all else fails, we've got the, the humble cement plaster, also known as stucco, that can carry the same colors in through the volumes that are less obvious to the public. However, as Gina did mention, this is a building in the round, so there's really no backface to the building. The plaster's been woven through thoughtfully when DRC gave us some great comments about using the expensive materials in the places where the public sees and touches the most, and the places where the public has less. and the places where the public has less direct interface using the more humble materials that are helping our budget stand on task. The difference between the two palettes are prob, is probably easiest to see in the renderings. The palette A is darker, palette B is lighter. So this is a view looking towards the pond, and here's the subtle difference in how the lighter stucco and lighter tile plays with the exterior. Looking from the opposite direction back towards the pools, here's a similar toggle back and forth. You can just see some of those darker materials versus the lighter ones. This is a view of the entry sequence. You can see someone dropping someone off. And the lighter material versus darker, we have a lot of transparency on this front side to really draw people into those front entries. And so then the volumes that have less, the way we want to invite less interaction will take some of those quieter materials. This is the pool deck where we'll have to use that tile most densely in order to get the waterproofing that we need. So here's how those lighter tiles read versus the darker ones. And here's the view as you would walk around the pond. We have quite a lot of wood where it can be afforded at this face, since people will have quite a lot of those exterior courtyards to interact with. And it'll be nicer to have softer materials to the touch, so less of that light and dark material at the tile. This is a view of what that lakeside room will look at, look like as it would be pointed towards the pond in the evening. Here's what the atrium space that connects the two different functions would look like. This is looking back out towards the entry. There's a lot of natural light incorporated into each with those taller roofs that define each of those spaces. And then here's what some of those multipurpose rooms would look like. This is the aquatics classroom, and that would be a view of the pool deck beyond. I do want to highlight that palette A is our recommendation and palette A received the most support, and go back to this front page, there we go, but from both DRC and PROS for the following reasons. The palette A has an earthier tone to it, and therefore blends in with the natural environment better. This is a building within a park, so there's quite a lot of natural surrounding. In addition, the reason we developed even a palette B to have you consider is that that lighter color gives you a little bit more of a civic presence in, in case you were wanting the, the building to announce itself as a civic amenity, rather than blending within the park, that was the option we could take. However, it was pointed out fairly that those lighter colors will probably have quite a lot of glare in this setting, particularly at the pool deck, and therefore be a little bit harder to maintenance as well with those lighter colors. So we are, we are fans of palette A. City staff has also recommended palette A, various committees have recommended palette A. However, we're happy to hear your comments about the palettes should you feel that you would like to.
Are we ready for questions or comments?
Absolutely.
All right. Oh, Matt, let's start with you, please.
Thank you. Just, do we have samples of the tile materials?
In the box, yes. The, the samples, the, the samples in the box, I will say, they are not the full size. It's a two, two foot by one foot tile. In real life, we didn't want to have you.
You wouldn't need a wagon.
Exactly.
We'll see the full size in two years.
Yes, we've cut down a smaller piece for you to see a version of.
This one here?
Yes, that's the lighter one. And the one that's blue is an accent tile that would be used in either palette. Yeah, that's the lighter tile.
Okay. So facing the pool, the south elevation?
Exactly.
Is this? And what's it made, what's?
It's porcelain.
Porcelain. When I saw the elevation, just the picture?
Yes.
I thought it was cinder block.
Yes, it does look very much like that. It's, it's actually much larger in real life, and as you can see, the texture is much more stone-like. It'll, it'll be a lot more elevated in look. It won't, it won't be the same as a cinder block building.
It won't look like cinder block.
It won't look like cinder.
Excellent. Where is the stucco then? You mentioned there'd be pockets of stucco.
Probably easiest to see on, when you're closer to person height. So some of the places we're putting it, we're actually, we've actually started showing this in some of our latest studies as a, as a potential stucco building to save some money. It would be here at some of the, some of the walls. This is actually a fairly glassy volume. This is the aquatics entry, so it's got quite a lot of glass. But where there is opaque wall, that would be stucco. We've got some hidden above here at the clerestory walls where no one, no one's actually looking at those walls, but probably most importantly, I think you're going to have to go back here, at these, these bars right here. This is like the commercial kitchen, the furniture storage. Definitely can have cement plaster on the outside. Similarly, some of these connecting volumes that are just side circulation that can have stucco, or these are some of those high walls I was saying up here, those could be stucco.
Thank you.
Cindy Darling, please.
Just a, a quick maintenance question. I, I really like the clerestory windows and the high, but from a practical standpoint, how do you clean those? I, I know some of them have the wood next to them. Is that, how do you clean the windows?
Right, that's actually one of the first things that Rich asked us to address.
Great minds think alike.
So, so how, how we're constructing them is there's a gap between the sunshades themselves and the windows to allow maintenance. Additionally, the, they look very dense from here because we're so far away, but there's a sizable gap between each louver so that primarily they would probably be cleaned from below, but they could also be cleaned directly from above. That proves a little bit more challenging, for instance, where there are these trellises that integrate with them.
Yeah.
So there's where we want to make sure you really could clean them from below entirely. The ones that are on the upper level will need to have maintenance staff up on some of the roofs.
And that's, there's a way to do that safely?
Exactly. There'll be, there'll be fall protection, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. This is, yeah, this is reflective, obviously, of what we saw a few weeks ago. And since I am not a designer, I trust experts. So I'm going to ask somebody though, Kevin, if you can come up for a quick sec, because between you, Karen and Jim, you're going to be at this center more than the rest of us combined any day of the year. So you agree that palette A is the one that is preferable to all of you?
In a word, yes, yes. I'm speaking for Jim and for Karen as well, yes.
Good enough for me.
Okay, I'm not seeing any more questions or so onward and upward, guys.
Okay, so that concludes the presentation around the areas that we were looking for your feedback on. I will talk about next steps and then we'll move on from there. So as I said, pending your direction, we'll proceed to construction documentation, which will take place October through into next year. We'll then have the documents required to bid the project out next year. We will award the contracts per agreement with the Aquatic Foundation no later than December of '25, such that construction can start thereafter. So construction upwards of a year and a half to two years, so we can open in 2027. With that, you will get regular updates from staff as part of your priority, quarterly priority updates. And then, of course, we can come back anytime you wish for us to give you any information on this project. So with that, again, we are seeking your direction on those design elements that we talked about earlier. Before we get there, want to see if there's any more questions from council before we open to public comments.
By jove, you've actually beaten them into submission.
I did it. I'll put this slide back up again after your public comment has concluded and the council comments concluded. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It is now time for public comment. Does anybody in the audience wish to make some public comment? Would you please come forward? And it's two minutes per person.
My name is Brendan Moran. I am the current Chair of the Parks and Open Space Commission, and I just wanted to give my thoughts and thank everybody for being involved, city council, city staff, our designers, our architects, the aquatics community, the public at large, and of course, the Parks and Open Space Commission. So I want to talk about just briefly our thoughts on that. We really like the design, and speaking as the Chair, I'm the only one here. We really like the colors, the way it fits in with the landscape, the roof line is very fitting. The lot of outdoor space is, I think, a big deal for us too, because it's not just about parking and going and swimming and coming back. It could be a good place for events and meetings and so forth. And so a place to, to spend time rather than just come and go. We're cognizant of the costs because we want to make sure that we continue to make fiscally sound decisions. We appreciate also the community request for more native plants. That was a big thing that, that came up. And I'm, as I heard, RRM is working with the community to actually make sure that the, the people who know feel satisfied with why we want more native plants. And I think there's a good balance right now. And then lastly, I'm not anti-cow, Kevin. I'm, I'm anti-rooster. Over, over the heads of the, but I do think that there's a very good palette and design that's going in now with like the lily pads, because this is going to be here for a long time. We want to make sure it's, it's timeless in a way. So I, I appreciate the efforts there. And then lastly, you know, I, I want to make sure that we make the point that while we have a world-class aquatics community and a very strong, you know, a lot of people who are very passionate about swimming, and I, I think that's one of the best parts about living here, we want to make sure this pool is for everybody. And that's just neighbors and friends and family and, and people just coming just for a quick swim too. Thank you very much for all your efforts. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Sir, would you please come forward?
If I could beg your indulgence to make a handout before I speak. I think that should be enough for everybody that's up here.
We can share if we have to.
All the way to the end, Mr. Mattis?
We also have what was sent through our communications as well, our correspondence report, that's already been up here too.
Well, bigger is better if you want to look into the details. So, Mr. Mattis, do you have one?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is David Harder. I've lived in Walnut Creek since 1987. I swam for about 40 years between '65 and '05. Four pools in Berkeley, three pools out here, including Larky at Cowell and in Concord, also down in Long Beach at the Olympic Facility, which was very wow. I've also had a project to redo the dressing rooms at Fort MacArthur in San Pedro with aquatic designs. I was struck by a contradiction in the presentation in which it said that the existing aquatic facilities would be retained. Calling it a dressing room doesn't make it a dressing room. What you have, in fact, are showers, you have toilets and you have sinks. There is no dressing room at all. In my written thing, I've been in the Cowell pool when the aquabears come out. That's 300 square feet. It's a mosh pit. Now, to go from that to zero is a contradiction, it seems to me, in terms of the presentation and the public's expectation. Would you want your daughters, nieces, grandchildren changing into their swimsuits where? Out in a shaded deck? Proportionally, you'd go to maybe 600 square feet right now to 1,200. Might cost you a million or more. You can kick the can and do it later and pay more. I'm in no position to dictate to anyone in this room. You will simply have to decide what's true and what's not. Thank you.
Any follow-up questions? I believe we brought all, but forward all the people who wish to make a comment. I'm seeing nobody rising, so we're going to go on to the next part of the meeting.
Are we asking questions or? I have a follow-up question just based upon that briefly. I don't know if we're doing that now or afterwards.
We, we can do it now.
Okay. I'm just curious to see what, what our designers say about that. Obviously, and I bring this up because a lot of work and thought was put into the public comment, so let's at least address it and make sure that we understand what's going, what's happening going forward and how it's addressed.
Absolutely. So I apologize if I went past it too quickly. Hopefully, this view of the building as a whole can show you the version of the changing rooms. It's still pretty small. So what I was trying to say, I will, I'll say it more slowly, is that the, the shower stalls provide a combination experience. They are, if, if one were simply going to take a shower in them, they're vastly oversized for that. So they are essentially a dual shower stall and changing area. And this is a trend that we see in modern changing rooms where people do not prefer to change communally. They would like a separate dressing area that can either be accomplished by having individual shower stalls and then additional dressing cubicles, or more often we see that they're combined together because folks prefer to take their shower and change in the same stall. So this provides that amount of space that we're required for you to, for instance, have all of your belongings on pegs and not have them get wet from the shower head that's too close to them, have a bench for changing in some of the areas, and definitely not recommending that people change on the shower deck, excuse me, on the pool deck at all, but instead providing private cubicles for people to change within.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to ask a question finally. Can you give me a, from here to there length of, here's the wall with the shower head and, and here's where?
Yeah. Do you know the size of the shower cubicles? I know that they, that's still pretty small. It's really hard to see. What, actually, on the handout that was handed out, you can see pretty clearly the white area that's defined, and I really can't see it on the plans here very well, is the actual shower area. It's drained to, a slope to drain and, and accommodate the water coming off of the shower head. That's approximately, I would say, five by five. Yeah. So a little bit wider than this and then a square of that, just for the shower function. And then double that for the area that you would change within. So it would be if you looked into it and wondered, you know, this is not a shower stall, it's incredibly deep. Did I mistakenly wander into the ADA stall? That would, that was actually the answer to the mystery. It's purposely very deep to allow, you know, maybe even a parent and child to occupy it together, clearly separated between an area where the water will not get you, you can change within, keep your goods dry, and an area where you could shower comfortably.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm still worrying about my shoes and socks, but I'll go on to other questions, Matt.
Well, I, I am too. So let's see, if, I understand the shower configuration. Maybe stepping back, you can explain kind of what the changing situation is now, which I under, it's more communal, right? It's benches, there's no, there's limited privacy. If you wanted to change in privacy, you would go into one of the toilet stalls?
Right, I can't speak as well for the women's side, but on the men's side, yeah. At, 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 I should know, and if you want, Karen could, could speak to that. But on the men's side, yes, it's a communal changing area separate from the one main shower area. There's one shower space for, for the men, and Karen can talk about how the women.
Karen Houston Martin, Recreation Program Manager. The answer to your question, in the women's room, we do have communal showers, five shower heads, along with two individual showers. We have three changing stalls that are quite small, and then the rest of it's communal. I will tell you that most swim team teenage girls head into the restrooms, into the water closets to change. A lot of them are uncomfortable because we only have three private changing stalls. We also have many women that head into those, usually the ADA stall, because that's the largest, to, to, to dress.
So three changing stalls in the women's, no changing stalls in the men, both now will have the showers with changing stalls, benches for communal, toilets still that people, as a last resort if everything else is taken. And then I thought you mentioned the family rooms too.
The family, oh, okay, go for it. The family changing rooms, there's one family changing room that is ADA compliant, so it's a little bit larger than the, the other changing room. That ADA compliance will have a, an adult changing table, which we don't have right now, which is incredibly awesome. As you know, we have a large special needs program here, so having that option for our, for our users is great. And then the other here. So having that option for our, for our users is great. And then the other family changing room is a toilet, shower, sink.
I could be missing something. But I'm seeing an increase in at least private changing area. And I don't know what the square footage is for communal, but I.
It's, it's, there's no, there's no communal changing. That's, that's essentially what you're seeing. And it's because there is such a high preference for private changing areas. If, you could decide to change near one of the benches, but it's not designed as a communal changing area, since there's a really strong preference to, to move away from that in, in younger generations. The, you know, the, the flow and size of, of people coming through those rooms is balanced against folks who want to be able to just quickly shower, rinse off, and go, who aren't as interested in fully changing, fully showering, et cetera. And this was one of those things we, we had to trade off. Obviously, it would be really nice to have a spa-like interior for people to change in. We, we kept on actually proposing those.
Then they park in there.
Right? But we, and then, then maybe people would stay too long. But also, you know, we, we did have to be mindful of the budget. So this, this will take care of the needs of folks who need a private place to change, who have been the folks who have been very vocal about, you know, wanting to make sure that their needs are seen. And as far as square footage goes, it's actually technically more changing room area. It's just dispersed throughout private changing room areas.
And then just last question. Where, where do people store their street clothes, et cetera?
This is definitely something Karen should talk about. So lockers apparently are places where things go to die.
So currently, we do not have lockers at Clarkson Center. We have them at Larky. They're never used, except for the toddlers that open and close them all day long. So we really encourage people to take things out onto the pool deck. We want people to have an eye on their, on their, on their personal belongings. Things that are left in the locker rooms, whether they're on pegs or in their bags, are typically walked off with somebody else.
I could just see someone having a wallet or a phone and not feeling comfortable about leaving it on the pool deck. Is, that's a minor design detail.
Well, we do, right now, we do allow patrons that some of them have their phones or their, or their small bags. And we do have a space that we collect them inside the facility, inside the office. They can leave them with us. And then when they leave, they can pick them up.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe Cindy Darling, excuse me, Cindy Silva has a.
So as old as I am, that my memory of my dormitory, college dormitory showers was very similar to this, where the shower stall and the changing area was one small bath chamber.
This will probably be larger than the one you remember.
Probably.
Yes.
You evidently know how old I am.
Or also, I've been in a dormitory. So.
Okay. Any more questions, comments, follow-up? Anything further? Alrighty. So let's go to the next section of this and see what we can do.
I'll just pull up that last slide that we had for you. Then I'll turn it over back to you, Mayor.
Okay. So we have a recommended council action. So we would provide direction on the design development presentation package with a focus on the four elements. Who would like to take the first stab at it? Cindy Darling, please.
I will take the first stab at it because this is so exciting. I mean, Kevin's numbers when we started off this conversation 50 years ago, the friend of mine that swam there when he was a little kid is now well past collecting Medicare. And so we are very happy here tonight. I love the work that you guys have done with it. I love the work that you've done with the community. And I think that speaks volumes to getting a good quality product on here. I will defer to Kevin on Palette A. I like Palette A. I think it works. I think the, the drop-off area works. And I appreciate the work that you've done on the landscaping to reflect the native plants. And I would be happy to say that this is a wonderful thing and send them off to do good things from here on out.
Next, please.
I'm just going to mirror my colleague. Thank you very much for all of your work on this and for working with the community and listening to a plethora of input. I think the landscape plan and planting palette make a lot of sense. The way you have aggregated it into basically zones of how they're used, and also considering how the, the sun sets and sun rises and what the environment's going to be. I appreciate Palette A. I watched both the Design Review Commission and the Prose Commission, and they all honed in on the, the lighter colors look more public facility. It reminds me of my grammar school. Okay, now I'm really going way back. And I think that the darker palette is more organic and in keeping with the, what the environment is in. And I think the ingress and egress for the circulation was the question that everyone in the commissions was struggling a little bit with. And I appreciate that. And I think the aquatic theme in the recreational pool makes the most sense. Quite frankly, Heather Farm was not a, an old McDonald's farm. It was a horse farm. And we don't want a bunch of big horses up in the, in the sky. So, thank you. Kevin?
Well, yeah, thank, thank you for the presentation and all the work that you've done up until this point. And it's obvious that you've gotten the input from a lot of various groups out there. And I think as, as we all know, the more, the more people that you get input from, the more opinions that you get. And so I, I have no doubt that there are going to be people that are still going to pick apart certain little areas. But I think that you've coalesced most of what people are looking for, what we're looking for, and put together something that the community is going to really enjoy and appreciate for decades to come. So as we talked about, the Palette A, the aquatics theme, all of that makes sense. And yeah, I appreciate what you've done. I echo my colleagues' comments as well.
Yes. Thank you to the very talented team. Obviously, we appreciate all your efforts and the professionalism that you brought to this project, to staff for listening and reaching out to all the stakeholders in the community and incorporating the feedback that you received into this really exciting plan. I particularly like the new entry and the drop-off area. I think that's an improvement over current conditions, but also how a lot of thought was given to the pedestrian and bicycle entries into the facility. I'm very much in, in favor of the earthen tones and the increased natives. If I had some feedback to give would be, if possible, look to the potential to activate some of the green spaces in the front of the building. And I personally see a benefit to having some locker facilities, if, even if it's out on the pool deck, against the wall, like ski lodge type with a punch in a four-digit code. I personally would feel more comfortable putting valuables in there than just leaving them on the deck. I think it could reduce the amount of staff time that's having to deal with things that you should be working on other things than, than caring for people's belongings and the liability that goes along with that. And then finally, and this will come as no surprise to anyone, that I am pro-frog, but not pro-kermit-the-frog. I like more kind of the frog and toad. So I saw different schematics there. And I, it doesn't have to look like an actual frog, but not a cartoon version of a frog. That's my valued feedback on the aquatic play structure. I think this is really exciting, though, and I look forward to seeing this come to fruition in the very near future.
Follow that act. Let's see. I agree with everybody. And I've watched the people who have worked with us. And, and I assume they had the same calm, even approach to almost everything. I said it once, sometimes when you work with the public, you're nice on your face and the outside, while internally, you're thinking of some heavy mallet to apply to their brains. It wasn't popular with the police department then, and it's probably not now. But I've been in the public long enough to know what it feels like. You never ever flinched, regardless of how smart or how stupid anything I said. So thank you very much. You gave everyone grace. And thank you for your creativity. It could have been just a big old square block, as far as I knew. And every time I look at it, you found a new way to make a corner look really incredibly creative and, and warming. And you respect the, the people that are going to be there and use that for years to come. There is nothing that screams now. It screams welcome. And that's an, that's very hard to accomplish. And I am so proud of you. And I'm so glad we were smart enough to have you working on this job. And I'm sad to, I'm sure, if I am still alive, that somebody will make sure that I get invited to the opening, because, because I've been here for a while worrying about whether it's ever going to happen. So thank you very much for your efforts. Thank you for your, your kindness tonight. And wow, we are.
You don't, you don't really. But if the council wanted to just say that the council makes a motion to approve the, the palettes and the changes that have been identified by staff tonight, that would be fine, too.
Okay, move to accept the updated project site plan, particularly the circulation plan that was the focus of the discussion, the updated landscape plan and planting palette, the recreational pool play structure with more lifelike, aquatic, not kermit, and exterior building materials Palette A.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Darling.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Councilmember Volk.
Aye.
Mayor Haskew.
And not to hurry this up, but we're adjourning this meeting until the council, regular council meeting at 6:00 PM tonight.